Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is time I call in to open session the meeting of AISD Board of Trustees on August 7th at 7:13 PM. Thank everyone for coming out to be with us this evening. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Keisha Mays in leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the July of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, would you please silence all cell phones, electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you and so you can't make a phone call? And now, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Welcome back from a short summer break. I told my board members I haven't seen them in a month and it seems like a long time. July is good for everyone. I had a baby. I didn't, my wife did. So if you can top that for the summer vacations, let me know. So, yes, and I won't fall asleep while I'm up here, I swear. So, we're not getting much sleep. We don't have a student performance tonight and we don't have a high school student a month. We'll start that back up next month when our students come back. We will go into our program and our presentation and we'll start off with a wonderful start to the year for us. Community Engage for Excellence Award of Appreciation, one group we get to recognize once a month. And this is a special group because we know lots of folks in this group in there. So let me, uh, let me talk about this group first and then we'll have you all come up and say a few words. So, the group we get to recognize tonight is the Kiwanis Club of Arlington. Since 1952, the Kiwanis Club of Arlington has provided service and support to the Arlington community. In supporting the Arlington ISD, the Kiwanis have sponsored community service and leadership skills development in our schools through the following. K kids program at Corey and Little Elementary, Builders Club at Ferguson Junior High, Key Clubs at Arlington High School, Bowie High School, Lamar High School, Ann Martin High School, and the Bugs Program at South Davis Elementary. The Kiwanis Club of Arlington extends its commitment to education by awarding a $2,000 college scholarship each year to a deserving Key Club graduating senior at Arlington High School, Martin High School, and Venture High School. In understanding the vital role teachers, of teachers in shaping and developing and inspiring our students, the Kiwanis Club of Arlington recognizes teachers at the elementary, junior high, and high school level through Teacher of the Year awards. The recognitions include monetary awards, very nice monetary awards, special plaques and certificates. In additions, the Kiwanis recognize a Teacher of the Month at Alsley Junior High by presenting a gift and certificate of recognition. Through volunteerism, sponsorship, and support, the Kiwanis Club of Arlington continues to enhance our community and touch the lives of our students. This is just a small list of everything you do, from your impact in the community. It's truly amazing and it's a nice honor and award to be able to award you the Community Engage for Excellence Award. At this time, who's speaking? We have the group. Come on up and please, a few words and let us thank you.
Now, I am Jeremy Norman and I'm actually finishing my incumbency as President of the Kiwanis Club of Arlington that ends in October. I'm a little hoarse. It's from allergies, not from accepting awards every night at places like this. But I would like to, if I could, just introduce the folks that came out. The club has over 60 members, but we have a smaller group here today of special members who I'd just like to introduce in front of the board. Of course, everyone already knows Jeanette Workman, but she's right there in the front row. And Reverend Kay Lancaster is next to her. The Reverend Russell Hildebrand, Larry James, Al Becker, Lloyd Shera, Dr. Ed Colby, and Mary Sprouse. If you could thank them for showing up tonight, I'd appreciate it. And this was a, very much a pleasant surprise. We didn't know we would be recognized in this way. So I appreciate you doing this for, for groups such as ours. It's so nice to be recognized by the community. And also, I think it's fitting that we're here in the Woodrow Counts Building. And of course, Woodrow Counts was a member of our club, a president of our club many years ago. And of course, the superintendent of schools here. So, thank you very much for, for all you do for the kids and we want to support you and it's nice to know that we're appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. And Jeremy just says a lot for the Kiwanis for all these years. You're consistently giving back to the schools and our students. And nothing's more important in this town than the students that are coming through and we thank you for that. And I know almost all of us attend y'all's Teacher of the Year appreciation and I know how much work goes into that. So I thank you for all your hard work to recognize our teachers who are the direct impact on our students that are out there. So, thank you for that. And if y'all would stay right there, don't leave yet. Dr. Cavassos and I would like to come down and present a plaque and a token of our appreciation. There's a plaque in our appreciation. pins representing outstanding recognition from the AISD. We'd like to give each one of you. Thank you so much, guys.
Every, every year pancake thing, you tell us you're gonna dill. I know.
We are going to jump just a little bit on the agenda and do some appointments, but I would also encourage anyone to stay after the appointments, because I almost did it right before and stayed on the agenda, but we're talking about the STEM Academy partnership between AISD and UTA. And if there's something you want to hear about, it's that. But it'll take about 15 minutes. So, to be nice to all of our appointments, I, we will jump on the agenda. With that, we have appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Hogg. I'd like, I'd like to recommend to the board that we ratify the individuals discussed in closed session for the principal of Roark Elementary and the assistant principal of Lamar High School and appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for the principal of Carter Junior High and assistant principal for Hutchinson Junior High.
At this time, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Trustees approve Appointment Items A and B, the ratification and administrative appointments as recommended in executive session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Mays and a second by Ms. Payne. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. Mr. Hibbs is serving at his youth bapt-, his summer camp for his church this week, so he couldn't be here tonight. Dr. Cavassos, please introduce the, the new appointees.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the new principal of Carter Junior High School, Mr. Rini Lizardo. Rini attended Southwestern Adventist University and received his Bachelor of Science in Communications and his Master of Education, Educational Leadership. Most recently, an assistant principal at Bowie High School, has served as an assistant principal at Bailey Junior High School, has been an ESL teacher at Bowles, has also worked in Cleburne as a middle school teacher. And, Rini, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
President Hogg, board members, Superintendent Cavassos. First off, I want to thank you for the appointment, for giving me this opportunity, for placing your trust of Carter Junior High in me. I also want to thank God. Through Him, all things are possible. I want to thank my wife and son, who are here today, Stephanie and Eli. Stephanie has always been my biggest supporter and without her support, I wouldn't be here today. My mom and dad and my brother. I also want to thank all the staff and teachers I've ever worked with, especially Ms. Wilmeth, Mr. Manley, Ms. Madison, Mr. Borden, Mr. and Mrs. Benavides, Mrs. Paul Turner, Mrs., Mr. Dowd, Ms. Peterman, and Ms. Laney. With their inspiration and support, I am the leader that I am today. I started at Arlington ISD five years ago, like you said, at Bowles, then I went to Bailey and then to Bowie. I always thought my career here would be at schools to start with the letter B. When, when I was ready to become a principal, I didn't apply for the first opening I saw or the second or the third. I was waiting for... Sorry about that.
He's excited, you're the...
Right, right. I'm sorry about that. I was, I was waiting for Carter. Carter is my dream school. I have a passion for the Hispanic community and the kids. In my life, my father was my educational role model. He showed me that through education, we can get out of struggle and he proved it by getting his Masters and PhD. I hope to be that role model for these students. So, thanks again for everything.
Next, I'd like to introduce the principal of Roark Elementary School, Stephanie Ann Lee. Stephanie attended East Texas State University, received her Bachelor of Science in Communications, Texas Women's University to receive her Masters. Most recently, she was a principal at Lively Elementary School in Irving and a principal at Clifton Early Childhood School, has been an assistant principal, a fourth grade teacher, a third grade teacher, and a self-contained special education teacher. Congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Cavassos, Board President Hogg, and Board of Trustees. It is my honor and privilege to accept the appointment of principal at Roark Elementary. I also want to thank Dr. Hallbrich and Dr. Warts for giving me the opportunity to interview for the position at Roark and all other central office administrators that were present and part of my interview process. I cannot go on without thanking the wonderful staff of Roark Elementary. They have been so supportive and have welcomed me in grand fashion as presented by them supporting me here this evening. I can't imagine the anxiety and fear that comes along with getting a new principal after having a principal for 21 years. Or maybe I can, because I have that same anxiety and fear following a principal that has served for 21 years. But I do want to take this opportunity to thank Marsha Tucker for leaving such a beautiful footprint on the campus of Roark. I'm very excited to work with the staff, the parents, the community, to ensure that the students that leave Roark Elementary are lifelong learners and positive contributors to society. I want to thank my family that's here to support me, my wonderful husband, Henry, who has supported me through this entire journey, never once asked me why I wanted to leave Irving. And after serving there for 15 years, he could have asked me several questions, but he didn't, so thank you. And my son, Jordan, and my daughter, Jessica, who have supported me and have been just as excited for mommy as I have been to move to Roark. So, thank you for your support. I also want to thank my kids for being the, the face of every single student that I serve day in and day out. When I make decisions that impact students, I think about how my own two kids would be impacted or affected. So, thank you for your inspiration, family. I love you. And thank you Arlington ISD for giving me the opportunity to serve in this great district. I'm looking forward to the journey. Let's do this, Roark Elementary!
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal of Lamar High School, Ms. Letitia Haynes. Letitia attended the University of Texas at Tyler, received her Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, sixth through 12th grade, Lamar University to obtain her Master of Education, Educational Administration. Most recently, an assistant principal at Ferguson Junior High School, has been a campus instructional coach, an intervention coach, and an AP and pre-AP Spanish teacher in De Soto, and has also taught in Lancaster as the Spanish and IB coordinator, and has taught IB Spanish in Tyler. Congratulations, Letitia. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes. First of all, thank you, President Hogg, Superintendent Cavassos, and all Board of Trustees members. I'd like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to come into Arlington ISD and be a part of such a great district. I've had many mentors along the way. I, I thank God for the gift that he has given me and the passion he's given me for education. I absolutely love what I do. I, since I've been here in Arlington, I've had numerous opportunities to be able to further my leadership development. I'd like to thank Ms. Wilmeth Sanado. She has been a great leader in working with us with the junior high schools. Also, Dr. Boland, the principal at Ferguson where I was. Also, Mr. Zahn. I did not get the opportunity to stay there with him very long, but I did enjoy working with him there as well and my other colleagues there. I have here with me tonight, my family. They're all over there. And so, I just want to say that, first of all, I'll start with my mother. She's been in the education field from Tyler. Waited, Ms. Solins, because that's a Tyler. Right, we were all from Tyler. And I, she's been there for 31 years. That's the first educator that I saw and she was very hard on us, high standards, but it has paid off, because I hold those same expectations for the students that I serve. I believe that they can do what they put their minds to and I'm there to help them to get there. My dad, he is also an educator as well and counselor, Emmanuel Ward. He, again, a big encourager in my life. Anytime that there is a decision that I want to make, I bounce it off of those two right there, just to, to make sure that I'm thinking in the heart of the educator. I cannot, I would be remiss to not mention my family who, I mean, they have been there through everything, I mean, everything. Jonathan Haynes is my husband, my daughter Jasmine Townsend, and then, Deandre, where are you? Okay, he's back there somewhere. And then my little girl Trinity is back there as well. And they have been with me when I'm up at night trying to finish different projects and trying to tell them, hold on, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the park or we're gonna go to a game or we're gonna do this, but you know, or sometimes I have my laptop and I'm there doing it with them. But they are very much a big support for me. Again, I have had an awesome journey in education. I want to continue on. I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve. Oh, and I wanted to mention Mr. Wine, where is he? Is he here? There he is, right there he is. Okay, and he, he is with us there at Lamar, leading us on as we are getting ready for the beginning of the year. My team, we are all working together to get ready for it. And so, anyone that's here for my team tonight, I thank you for coming as well. And I just thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to serving our students, parents, community further, as long as y'all have me. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new assistant principal of Hutchinson Junior High School, Mr. Jason Collado. Jason attended Paul Quinn College in Dallas and received his Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. Stephen F. Austin for his Master of Education. Most recently, a history teacher at Alsley Junior High School and a history teacher, has been a history teacher at Carter Junior High School as well. Jason, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, sir. Thank you. President Hogg, distinguished board members, Dr. Cavassos. First, I would like to thank God for opening doors throughout my path in education. I would like to thank my mother, my sister, my friends and family that are watching from Florida, so I just want to say hi. I would like to recognize my wife, Veronica. Just want to recognize my wife for supporting me throughout my educational career. I know without her, I could not have accomplished all that I have. I wanted to acknowledge my colleagues that provided me with the support and coaching I needed to become successful. Laura Thurston, I don't know if she's here. It's Laura Thurston. Thank you for being my mentor throughout my Masters program. She's helped me numerous times. I can't count how many times I've been, I've walked to her office and I've asked her different questions and she was just genuine and helped, helped me accomplish everything I've had, I've done. I would like to recognize Ms. Alma Smith. I think she's here, okay, Ms. Alma Smith. Ms. Alma Smith has helped me, been also a mentor for me as well. She's been very supportive in everything that I've done. She's been very encouraging and she was always there to answer many of my questions. I would like to recognize my instructional coach. Without her, I wouldn't feel fit with the rigorous instruction that I feel comfortable with now. Principal Nix. I would like to recognize Principal Nix for meeting with me numerous times and providing me with the feedback I needed to implement to become an effective instructor. And finally, I would like to recognize Principal Acosta for giving me the opportunity to work on your administrative team and to share your vision for Hutchinson Junior High. I look forward to working with the faculty and the community and supporting the objective of the strategic plan and to take ownership of my position as an instructional leader. Thank you very much. Go Hutch.
And last but not least, I'd like to introduce our new Director of State and Federal Programs, Ms. Julie McGuire. Julie attended Eastern Illinois University and obtained her Bachelor of Arts and St. Xavier University and obtained her Master of Education in Educational Administration. Most recently, was the federal programs coordinator at Carrollton Farmer's Branch, has worked at Lake Worth ISD as federal programs coordinator, and Everman as an instructional coordinator, and has worked as a development manager, a grant specialist, and an art and visual arts instructor and teacher. Julie, congratulations. Welcome. Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, please. Mr. Hogg, Board, Dr. Cavassos, I just want to thank you for this opportunity in allowing me to join such a fantastic team. I have never been so welcomed in my entire life and I've had a long educational career and in the very short time that I've been here, I have been welcomed with open arms and all the joy and happiness that I can, can express. I would like to thank a few people. My husband, Tim, who has supported me through my entire career, who's been beside me and supported me and pushed me and is my biggest mentor on a daily basis. And my daughter, Caitlin, who is here this evening and is put up with her mom being busy all the time and understanding what it's like to have an educator for a parent. My son would be here, but he is at his two-a-day evening session for football, so, you know, it was a toss-up between here and there, I'm sure. I would like to thank my parents, even though they're not here, they're in Illinois. If I would have asked, they would have been here, but they have always encouraged me to do whatever I wanted to do. And I can only hope that I can be the same support for all of the staff here and for all of our students, so we can allow them to do what they choose to do to live the dream that they want to live. Thank you very much.
Wonderful appointees, Dr. Cavassos. I'm afraid we're gonna lose half our crowd when Ms. Haynes's family walks out, so. I'm excited, I like it. So, and I like the people recognizing everyone on the internet, because we always encourage people to watch. So, as is our custom, we ask all of our appointees to please follow out Mr. Cale, so we can have a receiving line at the start. If you would, please let the board go first, so we can get back to a meeting. We will take a brief break, returning approximately at 7:50. I'll now call this meeting back to order at 7:54 PM. We will go back to the agenda item we skipped, and I'm glad we're coming over, even though I want everyone to hear it, but they can watch it online and I'm sure they'll hear a nice Star Telegram article about it tomorrow, which I know it's currently being written. So, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Cavassos to talk about the STEM Academy partnership with AISD and UTA.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at, this time, I'd like to call forward Rick Garcia, who's been working on this project. But before that, before he starts, I do want to thank Martin High School and, and the staff and UTA for their work on this innovative project. And I'll tell you that when it comes to the teacher level and the faculty level at UTA, it makes things that much more effective. And so, beforehand, thank you for that. Rick, you want to introduce and then let's do the presentation. Thank you.
Well, good evening, President Hogg, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board, and to our wonderful AISD family that's still here. And congratulations on the newborn.
Thank you.
I guess you could say we're kind of birthing our own baby here with the STEM Academy. We're very excited. We're very excited.
Good connection, Mr. Garcia. Good connection.
Anyway, without a doubt, all transformational efforts that we do are based on our vision and mission for the district, and certainly with our framework of inspired learners, effective leadership, and engaged community, everything that's transformational in our area, we hone in on these three or four. We're also excited, because we do a lot of it based on research, and we go back to the work of Webb, for example, here, where she's telling us, "If learning is the goal of teaching, then the learning processes should include exchanging and discussing ideas, opinions, and knowledge, working together rather than separately." And that's exactly what's going on right now with the STEM Academy, not only internally with our people, meaning our teachers, and our Principal Roddy leading the charge, but also with our UTA partners. What you're going to hear tonight is you're going to hear one of our own, Ms. Kelly McCullough, that's going to talk to you about the framework that's been designed up to this point on the STEM Academy. You're also going to hear from Dr. Ashley Purgerson, who's been a pleasure to work with and the champion on her end with UTA. And then the closing remarks will come from our own Ms. Marlene Roddy, our principal at Martin High School. But at this point, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Ashley Purgerson to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Distinguished Board Members, President Hogg, Dr. Cavassos, thank you very much for inviting UT Arlington to be here tonight. It's truly my honor to be here and represent our great university. I should note that I am here with the support of our administration from the President down through our deans and all our leadership in between, so I wanted to make sure that I conveyed that. Thank you again for being here. I want to recognize quickly my colleagues that are here. Dr. Greg Hale, he is an Assistant Dean in the College of Science. I forgot to mention, I also am an Assistant Dean in the College of Science. And Dr. Carter Tierney, Assistant Dean in the College of Engineering. So, we've got our two STEM colleges represented here this evening. I also want to start off by praising the teachers and administrators from Martin High School and Mr. Garcia that we've had the pleasure of working with. I want to make clear that they came to us with this vision, and it's one that we're extremely supportive of. And it's really fantastic that they have come forward and, you know, been enthusiastic upfront about how much they want to do this. It's been infectious for us, and it just makes us want to partner that much more. UT Arlington, as you probably know, has missions of access and affordability, and that mission of access and also our mission of excellence cannot be met without partnering with the community. And we have an excellent framework in place of a lot of transformational programming that we're already doing. And we've sort of laid the foundation, if you will, through a lot of our transformational learning from our students. But we want to build the walls up with that, and we want to scale it, and we want to funnel down to our community and our K-12 partners. We also have a vision of becoming the model urban institute in the nation. And that means that we want to be the leaders in research and instruction and the student experience, but I think that urban word is really key, because you cannot be a model urban institute without partnering with your community. And that's another thing that we want to be a leader in. We are well-placed to do that. We are a Carnegie-recognized institute for service learning, but that's not enough. We want to do more with K-12. Our children are the future, and AISD is our neighbors. And a partnership like this only reflects that we are all one community, and our two entities coming together makes it clear that we are one community. I think tonight, in just a few moments, you're going to hear some startling stats on STEM education in our country. And what's more startling is that for groups historically underrepresented in STEM, those statistics are, you know, even worse. And the stakes could not be higher. We have to do something about STEM education in this country. And it's at the K-12 level, it's at the university level, but we have to remember that we are, it's a pipeline. You know, your students become our students, your students are our future. And it's important, the time is now. We can't wait any longer. I want to mention that UT Arlington has just been named a Hispanic-serving institute, and we have the fifth most diverse student body in the nation, making us, you know, very well-placed to be a partner with you in this. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Greg Hale and Dr. Carter Tierney. I wanted to make sure I gave them an opportunity to say a couple of words quickly.
Thank you, President Hogg, Dr. Cavassos, and Board Members. Personally, I'm very excited to expand our partnership. We've had just fantastic success in implementing our UTEACH Teacher Preparation Program for math and science at the secondary level, and we've had just really excellent partnership with, on the curriculum side, with the math and science folks. Human Resources has gone out of their way to help us make us a smooth transition to student teaching under this, you know, new, slightly new model compared to our old. We had 28 science and math folks in secondary student teaching last spring. That's typically several years' worth of folks for us, and we've managed to do that just in the spring. So, we're excited about that partnership and look forward to not just helping you fill your classrooms with excellent teachers, but also help give your students a great experience in the STEM Academy, and hopefully a pipeline right into our courses. Thank you.
And just a brief word as the representative from engineering. We love working with our science partners at school. We're very much excited about working with all of your partners and your group here from Martin. They've been very inspiring and coming in asking for things that we hadn't thought we could give them. So, we're looking forward to all the things that we can do with them and with our College of Science. And we hope that it'll be a very fruitful partnership for everyone.
Thank you.
And now, we're going to ask Ms. Kelly McCullough to come up here and describe to us the framework thus far.
Thank you. Good evening to you all, President Hogg, and Superintendent Cavassos, Board of Trustees. We're all very excited to be here tonight, and we're excited that you're excited that we're here and ready to show you what we've done. I am extremely honored to be up here representing our group tonight, representing the partnership that we've started with UTA. So, I'm just excited to be here and show you what we have as a vision and framework for a STEM Academy for Arlington ISD. I want to start with who. Who is on this committee and who's been working so far in trying to pull this together in terms of Arlington ISD specifically? This is our group. This is our committee. Unfortunately, Jay Atman, Erin Cadel, and Michelle Davda could not be with us tonight, but we do have Amy Motzenbacher here, who handles engineering internships for the entire district. We have Greg Patton, who is Martin's Career and Technology Department Chair, as well as one of our engineering teachers. We have Mary Ann Varner as a part of our math department, who will also be doing some instructional coaching. And then, of course, our Principal, Ms. Marlene Roddy. So, they are all here to answer any questions that you might have as we go through this and present our framework tonight. This is our agenda tonight, the items that we want to present. First of all, why do we want to have a STEM Academy in Arlington ISD? As a committee, what are our goals for that academy? How is it going to be different from existing programs in Arlington ISD? Then, what is our framework, our requirements, and preliminary course plans, as well as the UTA partnership that we've started, and some of the things that we anticipate having with them? So, first of all, why? Why do we need a STEM Academy? Well, right now, in the United States, 50% of our economic expansion is related to science and engineering, but only 5% of US workers are employed in those fields right now. It's also recognized as a need for our national security strategy, as a way to attack foreign policy issues and security challenges that we face as a nation. We also recognize that STEM education can also provide an enhanced quality of life, and it has been shown that those with STEM-related bachelor's degrees typically see a lesser unemployment rate than other college graduates do. So, there's a national need for STEM expertise. This is just a visual image to give you an idea of what job growth currently looks like. Between 2010 and 2020, job growth in all fields is only about 14%. That's what's expected. All the way over on the right, you see biomedical engineers, and everything in between is STEM-related. So, we see a tremendous job growth opportunity in those STEM fields. Not only do we need the STEM expertise in our nation, but we need more graduates. In 2008, only 31% of US bachelor's degrees were awarded in science and engineering, and that was compared to 61% in Japan and 51% in China. So, globally, we're behind the curve. The President's Councils of Advisors on Science and Technology estimates that there will be 1 million fewer STEM graduates than what we will actually need as a nation and industry over the next decade. Currently, also, only 43% of students entering a STEM major in a four-year college or university finish that STEM degree, so retention is an issue for STEM graduation. Our need for STEM expertise and STEM education goes all the way up to our highest leadership. In 2010, President Obama said that leadership tomorrow depends on how we educate our students today, especially in science, technology, engineering, and math. So, we have national goals in terms of STEM education, and two of those is to develop and recruit and retain 100,000 excellent STEM teachers over the next 10 years for the purpose of graduating an additional 1 million students in STEM majors. And it's also recognized that we won't be able to do this unless we bring in those traditionally underrepresented groups to produce the kind of graduates that we need as a nation. So, what are our goals as a committee in looking at what kind of framework makes sense for Arlington ISD? Well, in answering those questions as a group, these are the items that we came up with. We want to have students who are prepared for STEM majors with no remediation required. We also want students to have the opportunity to complete their first year of STEM college courses before they graduate from high school. It's not just the academics, though. We need them to have leadership skills. Leadership skills are going to be crucial, and so we want that to be a part of our academy as well. And then, for the students to have a commitment and a connection to our community, so to be socially responsible, globally aware, and locally engaged. Now, Arlington ISD does a great job of STEM education, so how is this going to be different from programs that already exist in the district? Well, first, we'd like to implement a cross-curricular instruction, meaning we would put a STEM spin or a STEM integration into our core subjects. We'd have enrichment opportunities outside of the classroom. Of course, our partnership with UTA would allow us to use some of their coursework and their resources to enhance the education that we can offer. Our student population would be drawn district-wide, so even though it would be housed at Martin High School, we would still pull from our entire community for student population. We'd have dedicated personnel, including someone to handle internships, mentorships, job shadowing, counseling, and advising. And then, there would be an emphasis on retention. We want to retain these students, get them excited about STEM education, and get them moving forward and staying in the program. So, how are we going to do this? Well, we looked at a lot of different models in the North Texas area, as well as around the country, to get an idea of what other people are doing, and we started to pull from those different resources to determine what things made sense for us. We envisioned four pathways within the academy, engineering, biology and biomedical science, computer science, and then a math-science pathway as well. Program attributes. In terms of logistics, like I mentioned a minute ago, it would be a school within a school housed at Martin High School, and this would allow all of those students to have access to all of the extracurricular UIL activities that you would typically have in high school. The academy would have sheltered core classes to provide that cross-curricular instruction. We would envision 100 students per grade level, with recruitment beginning in 7th and 8th grade, with an application and an interview process for admission. In terms of academics, we'd like to implement project-based and problem-based learning in the classroom. We would have an option to accelerate their math and science education, as well as a catch-up option for math and science, and I'll explain that in a little more detail as we get further into the presentation. And then, each pathway would have a senior capstone project. Outside the classroom, we would want to provide internship and mentorship and job shadowing opportunities. We would also have required enrichment programs, maybe a summer academy for students, and then also have a community service component. We'd have a dedicated faculty, including an application and interview process. We want to identify candidates as teachers and administrators with STEM interests and STEM experience. And then, of course, we want to provide the kind of professional development they'll need to provide the kind of education we want to give these kids. We also have some attributes under consideration we've seen in other programs. We're not sure if or whether we would really need to implement those in AISD, but here are a list of them. For example, program entry after 9th grade, how we would handle that. Could we have an advisory or a seminar period maybe to implement some of the leadership education we talked about? Maybe an extended school day to allow for that, a flexible schedule, depending on what the needs are for the academy. Is there a test for academy admission that we could use just to identify students that maybe haven't shown the interest or the aptitude, but really do have it? Identify those students that are kind of the diamonds in the rough. And then, a STEM, a community advisory board, and then, of course, academic and behavioral requirements for entry and retention in the academy. So, what would we need? Well, staffing, of course, would include our four pathway classes with engineering, biomedical science, computer science. We would also have core teachers dedicated to the academy for the problem-based learning, an administrator, a counselor, an instructional coach, who would also function as a teacher, and a STEM community coordinator, who would be involved with the community service and internship aspect. Technology. A lot of these STEM electives that we currently offer require different types of software. We would want students to have access to that away from campus. So, having students have access to laptops or tablets, and teachers as well, to be able to communicate with students outside the classroom. An accelerated cycle of replacement, because most of these programs require up-to-date computing capabilities. Of course, there would be software and other needs that we'll have to identify as we get further into the research process. Facilities. We'd like to incorporate innovative learning spaces, which might include something like modular desks, so that we can facilitate some new and different types of instruction depending on what the needs for each particular day would be. Study areas to kind of foster that collegiate atmosphere, get students working together. Additional lab spaces, updated and current student-use equipment. We'd like students to have the latest and greatest as much as possible. And then, of course, the holy grail of public education, additional storage. So, STEM Academy coursework. This might be a course plan for an engineering student. It would be a typical math and science pre-AP track, along with our current Project Lead the Way engineering opportunities. These are potential credit, engineering credit, dual-credit opportunities with UTA that we've identified and that we'll continue to talk through as we go through the planning process. For biology and biomedical science, it would look similar to traditional pre-AP science and math track, along with the biomedical science coursework, and then additional electives. The next slide shows you other potential opportunities with UTA for the biomedical track, the biology and biomedical track. Computer science, again, the pre-AP math and science process, along with the computer science that they would take for each particular year. And then, again, UTA opportunities as seniors and possibly juniors. These are the math options, and the only thing I want to point out here is that on the top line, you see what a traditional pre-AP track would look like with Algebra I being taken in the 8th grade. We talked about having an accelerated math and an accelerated science option. That would be the second row there, which would allow students to take Algebra I in 7th grade, giving them 7th grade, giving them an opportunity to take some of the higher-level math as a senior. And then the catch-up option, students who have not been through Algebra I as an 8th grader, getting them caught up so that they have the opportunity to complete calculus before they graduate. Same thing for science. The top line is the traditional pre-AP science track. We have a catch-up plan identified there as well, and an accelerated plan for students that want to get even more of their college coursework done before high school graduation. So, our UTA partnership is ongoing, and they've been a great help. We've been able to sit down and discuss what can we do. We've thrown out our ideas, and they've thrown out theirs. Here's a list of some of the things that we've identified that we'd be able to work together on. We'd like to see students ready for admission into the STEM college of their choice at UTA upon graduation. Of course, all the dual-credit or club opportunities that we can identify. UTA has a research methods class that they are implementing right now for their freshmen, I believe. And we think it would be a great opportunity for our students between their junior and senior year, so that they can get ready for that capstone project. Use of their labs for hands-on learning. An example would be the Shmazoo lab there. She mentioned, or Dr., I'm sorry. Ferguson mentioned that they are an HSI institution now, so there will be grant opportunities there. And again, the pulling in the underrepresented groups is going to be very important. We'll have access to their students and their professors for mentorships and for guest lectures, enrichment opportunities on their campus. And one of the great benefits is that these students will have been on the UTA campus as high school students. And so, that transition as they go into their freshman year should be much more comfortable with them. And we've talked to UTA also about the freshman programs that they have in terms of transitioning their students and implementing that at the high school level, to have them even more prepared and more comfortable on the campus. We'll have an articulation between our AP STEM courses and the freshman STEM curriculum at UTA. We'll be working with them on curriculum and how to best prepare our students for the pathways that they want to take after graduation. Of course, our continuing relationship between AISD and UTA is going to be expanded through this program. And then, we will have their support and their input on designing a program as we complete this process. Ultimately, though, how do we measure success? These are the things that we've identified. We would like to see 100% completion rate for students who have entered the STEM Academy. We would like to see that graduates of the STEM Academy have earned at least 30 hours of college credit, with at least half of that being STEM-specific. And then, after completing their first year of college, 100% of STEM Academy graduates are continuing in STEM majors, that retention piece. And then, STEM Academy classes will match our community demographics within 15%. So, when? Here's the timeline that we have right now, presenting to you all what we have so far in terms of our research and plans. Continuing in the summer and fall with our research and planning, collaborating with UTA, developing curriculum, that kind of thing. January 2015, hopefully opening up the application process. And then, in August of next year, starting our inaugural year. Now, we'll turn it over to Ms. Roddy.
Do you have any questions for Kelly or any of the committee before?
Okay. All right. Okay.
We have plenty of questions, Ms. Roddy.
I bet you do.
Good questions, but we have plenty of questions.
President Hogg, Superintendent Cavassos, and the board. Well, obviously, we're really excited about this. Actually, we started talking about a STEM Academy a couple of years ago. I was brought into a meeting, and they were talking about, what do you think of a STEM Academy? Well, I got pretty excited because I think my staff is phenomenal. You know, I don't like to boast, but yes, really, I do. And so, just for instance, this year, Jay Atman's not here this evening, but he took a science team to state, and they came in second in the state in the Science UIL academic. And so, and then we've had our robotics team, and Greg Patton has led the way there. Amy Motzenbacher has led the way with the engineering internship program in the district and works directly with Lockheed. Marian Varner has worked with all levels of students, from our struggling students up to our GT students. And so, when we assembled this team, I was so thrilled, because we were originally talking about a template and following sort of a model that was already in place. And then, Dr. Cavassos apparently hired Rick Garcia to be a transformational leader. And Rick had a different idea about it, and we were thrilled. He came and talked with me, and he said, I'm really not interested in so much of a template or a model that's out there, because I really think, as a school and as a district, that we should develop what would work best for us. I don't think we should ignore those models. I think we should research and see what's there, what's available, and then take what's the best and talk to those individuals and those people who've developed STEM Academies and pull from their knowledge and put together what is the absolute best model for our district and working hand-in-hand with UTA. I also want to really thank Dr. Ferguson, because the first time we met with UTA, they said, what are y'all talking about? And they seemed a little like they were scratching their heads. And so, we regrouped, and we met again with them, and boy, they were just so receptive and so excited. And they actually told us, gave us a lot of ideas about what we could do and where they could really help us out and what the restrictions they had placed on them. And believe it or not, they have a lot of guidelines as well. And so, anyway, they've just been phenomenal. So, I want to really thank my committee. I asked these people, I created on my first class, my STEM Academy committee, and I asked them individually if they would be a part of it, and they were, okay, yeah, that sounds kind of exciting. And they have just run with this. You can see the energy, the dedication. They're driven to get this done. I think they're just thrilled that they can be a part of its development. And so, I'm very, very proud to be a part of it as well. So, thank you. And Dr. Ferguson, would you like to say anything else on UTA's behalf?
Thank you, Principal Roddy. I just wanted to close with a couple of things. Couple of quick details. I'd like to note that that research methods course that they're mentioning is a part of a program that we're starting that one of only six universities in the nation has. So, we've got some great things in place that your students, and by the way, none of those programs have funneled down yet to a K through 12 level, so you could potentially be the first. The GK-12-style program they mentioned, where you put graduate students in the classroom in K through 12 to make their research relevant for a K through 12 audience, is a National Science Foundation-funded program. So, we're talking about some truly innovative things. And we, and there's a lot more where that comes from. That's just the tip of the iceberg. But I just wanted to mention again how excited we are. I also wanted to mention that one thing we've learned as university educators, and I think the same probably goes for K through 12, is that the best things happen when faculty are able to take ownership of what's happening. And when faculty are able to stay in the classroom and do the good work that they do. And I want to make sure I mention that the teachers here are the ones that are taking ownership of this and have been creating it from the ground up. And in partnering with our faculty to align curriculum under Dr. Tierenen and Dr. Hale's guidance, something really special could happen. And that begs for me to also mention, though, that the staffing will be critical for this, particularly for these enrichment opportunities that we're talking about. You know, when freshmen come on a university campus, it's overwhelming. And when these high school students come for dual-credit, we absolutely refuse to let your students come and get lost in the mix. They're going to need support. And the staffing's going to be critical for that. So, we hope, you know, AISD will look forward to future discussions with us on that, because we certainly look forward to it. And UT Arlington is behind this initiative. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson and team, and Professor. And I think we're behind it all, so we're fully supportive. Questions from colleagues? Mr., I'm still using doctor for all these folks. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Let's see. Is the plan to bus these students to Martin?
Yes. If we need to bus them, we will provide transportation.
Then they're not going to transfer to Martin?
I think the expectation is that they will, right?
That's correct.
Our vision is that it is going to be, and I thought we had a slide, maybe we pulled that one, that they will be, even though they're from all over the district, that we want them to have a high school experience as well. And so, they will be Martin students, and they'll have other opportunities besides being in the STEM Academy, if they want to march in the band or if they want to play football. They have those opportunities. We're not trying to say, you know, you've got to fit into this mold, and that's it. So, yes, they would, we would, I hope, my idea is that, yes, transportation would be provided, but they would truly become a Martin student.
So, we're going to transfer 400 students to Martin?
Certainly not at one time.
We're going to transfer 100 students to Martin.
Well, and some of the students will come from Martin. Some of the students will be from Martin.
There is an application process that we're looking at, and so, yes, we feel like that there will be a number of students from Martin that would like to be part of this academy. We're not saying that students that aren't, that can't take engineering or they can't take biomedical at Martin, and, you know, they could be in the academy, but they can also take those elective courses and not be in the academy.
What is the anticipated class size?
Of the first group?
For the individual classes?
Of our current class size or what?
No, for the planned STEM class size.
It's 100 students. We were thinking 100 students.
No, 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 no. Individual classes.
What are our individual class sizes at Martin? Just 30, 25 to 30?
So, these students will be in classes of 25 or 30?
Yes.
Okay. Do you anticipate increased class, increased staffing?
I think we had some staffing requests up there, but we also plan to use the staff, current staff that we have.
This is sounding a lot like sort of a super avid, if it pulls in the students that I think ought to be in this academy. Are you going to be able to guarantee that we will have this representation from the underrepresented?
That's certainly one of our goals, and if you heard through one of the slides, there's a huge emphasis on access for students that are underrepresented. And working with UTA as an HSI institution, that's certainly the goal from, between both districts, for both institutions.
But this will not be UTA's selection process. This will be our selection process.
Correct. But we are taking input from UTA as well, because we want to make sure that the students are ready to take on the rigorous coursework of dual-credit. If there's a concern about maybe this becoming a magnet school, that is not the intention. We're looking at access for all students. And when we say that, we're talking again about the economically disadvantaged or underrepresented student. That really is a main focus, and when we started our conversations, we made sure that our staff was very aware of that goal. We are not looking to create a magnet school. Although, we did look at magnet school programs, which are stellar, not only in the state but nationally, that's certainly not the intention. So, Martin would not be taking, for lack of a better phrase, the cream of the crop from all campuses. We're looking really at diversifying and access for all.
Okay. My last question, then, is the plan is to start with 100 freshmen next August?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mays.
Thank you very much for that presentation. That was exciting to hear. I just have a couple of questions. I get from the presentation that we're going to make sure that we have access for the underrepresented populations within STEM. My question is, how are we planning on recruiting? How are we planning on making it exciting? How are you planning on bringing in the underrepresented groups? That, obviously, the access has been there, but for some reason, there's a disconnected interest. Do we have any ideas on that?
That's a great question, and we don't have a straight answer right now, other than we are looking at that. And UTA has a lot of experience, and of course, they've been around for a number of years. They have a great experience of diversifying their student body, and that's what we're hoping to capitalize on, their experience in recruiting students from all walks of life. And we will be doing the exact same thing. Not present here today are people like Craig Wright, Noel Fielding, Julie Porter, Renee Pope, key players that will help us as well in identifying these students. And again, what you saw today was just a framework. There's a lot more exciting pieces to come into play, including how we recruit these students.
Great, great. And then, my second question, under the staffing part, I see engineering, the biomedical sciences, computer science. Are we also planning on staffing for math? I didn't see that here. Is that part of the?
Math is.
Can I ask you a little bit about staffing?
I think math was one of the four pathways.
Okay, because it wasn't included on staffing, so I didn't know if that was part of the partnership.
Part of the core.
Okay. Part of the core.
So, you have the science, math, the elementary history.
Okay. Thank you.
One last comment. Dr. Ferguson can talk about 11th and 12th grade.
Part of the model that may not have been clear in the presentation is that these STEM Academy students will be coming to UT Arlington by 12th grade certainly, hopefully even in 11th grade for dual-credit purposes. So, some of the staffing will be our staffing and will be happening on our end. And if I may go back to your question about recruitment, I actually just went through an exercise recruiting underrepresented groups for a STEM program that we're starting at the university level. And I can tell you that the recruitment takes a lot of man-hours and a lot of personal contact. And that's just the straightforward answer for you. And many of my partners at other institutions would tell you the same. And so, again, that does speak to the critical piece of staffing, but, you know, this program might be a way for us to explore what works with recruitment for underrepresented groups as well. So, I like to, I like to see it as an opportunity and not a challenge.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Ms. Sollins?
Thank you, President Hogg. I want to, first of all, thank you all for being here this evening, but more importantly, for doing this very important work, opening doors. It's a game changer for students, for AISD, for UTA, and for the entire community overall. So, I appreciate you taking the time to look at that national need and let's answer the national need with a talent that's right here in this district. So, I'm tremendously impressed with your presentation and the thought leadership you provided so far. I have just one small question, which would be, how's this going to fit at Martin High School? When I walk through your halls, I don't see a lot of room, President, Principal Roddy.
The strategic plan has some programs in place that will pull more students from our campus, and I believe that's why the CATE centers and different parts of the bond package that will help to address those needs. And we feel like we have students that are going in different directions, and we feel like this is an opportunity that we have to provide our students in the district, just like we provide the opportunity for students to go to early college, high school. We feel like this is a need that this district has. And so, you know, there's, we'll have to analyze what the best way to do this is. But you're right, we're full right now, but there's ways that we feel that the district will address that in helping us to make this space available.
And I'll let, Ms. Sollins, that as part of the bond, there's the repurposing of career tech space, repurposing of, when we do the indoor practice facilities and things, indoor athletic facilities as well, repurposing of space. And then, you're right with the, coming up, Career Tech Center, it'll be shuttled in students and so to relieve the capacity at the high schools for further opportunities.
Very good. And that leads me into the next, my next question is, you know, what are the next steps? You clearly have done a lot of work in articulating a model that is not just a copy model of what's something, what's something that fits our students, our needs, our, both of our systems, but with the work you've done and a year away, so what are the next steps?
We're going to be breaking out into subgroups, and you may have seen one of the slides that talks about, we're going to be looking at the content, the curriculum, the vertical alignment of the courses. So, we're going to break out into subgroups, depending on the four tracks that you saw as well. So, the next month, September, October, we'll see us very busy with that. By October, we hope to maybe come back and just show a super-short snippet of what the framework now looks like, which will be the entire plan, because then we have a very quick turnaround to begin recruitment of students. So, to answer your question, we're really going to be breaking out into small groups. UTA- question, we're really going to be breaking out into small groups. UTA was also investigating funding, because on their end, as you, you can imagine, faculty teach their university courses, but obviously to come and work with us, they have to commit their time and energy. And so UTA has been gracious enough to look for funding on their end, to be able to pay their faculty to come and work with us, whether it's after-school hours for us or a weekend. We don't know yet, but that's what we're looking at, breaking out into subgroups.
We will hear back from you in the next few months, I'm sure.
Oh, yes, definitely.
And I have one other follow-up question, if I could please, Dr. Ferguson, that you mentioned some research that has not funneled traditionally to the K-12 framework and that we may be one of the first to do so. But I didn't get all of that. Would you mind going into that a little bit more, please?
Absolutely. There's a program that started out of UT Austin called the Freshman Research Initiative. You can Google it very easily. Google UT-FRI. It'll be the first thing that pulls up. The Howard Hughes Institute recently funded five other institutes in, excuse me, four other institutes in the country to replicate this program. And then we are also replicating it. We are starting a national consortium with those universities. And what the program does is puts freshmen and sophomores in college as part of coursework, performing original research. And the quick version of it is that you take a piece of a faculty member's research that can be scaled, and you pull it down into the curriculum itself. The project that we're starting is called Drug Discovery, and the students will chemically extract compounds and test them for antibiotic activity. And they will test compounds that have not been tested before. It starts, though, with this, the sequence of classes that goes all the way through sophomore year starts with research methods. And the students learn to read primary literature, analyze data, present data, write technically, all the things that scientists do. They just do it not as in-depth, but they certainly get the breadth.
Good. Thank you very much. And Dr. Ferguson, while you're here speaking and all of the, from the university, we're so pleased with the continued partnership with UTA and the way that our, our systems continue to work together and bring tremendous opportunity, leading-edge opportunities to our students. Appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you, Board Member Solins. I would need to echo that, that we, UT Arlington has tremendously enjoyed the partnerships with AIST. And there's ways for us to leverage programs like Bound for Success that are already in place, thanks to, you know, the visionary leadership of all of you and Dr. Kavasos and our UT Arlington leadership as well. You talked about next steps. Those are going to be some of the important next steps that happen, is talking about how can we, you know, save costs, save time, other things, by leveraging what we already have in place. And on our end, next steps is going to be, you know, formalizing all the enrichment, opportunity, ideas that we know will work. Our next steps are now to formalize those and sit down with Rick and talk about how is that actually going to come to fruition. So there's a lot of good work to be done. It, you're right in that between now and one year from now, there is a lot to be done, but it can be done.
It's a great time to be a student in Arlington. Thank you.
Dr. Raish.
Thank you, President Hogg. Thank you all. Marlene, Martin staff, UTA, the collaboration is awesome. We do have a great relationship that just continues to grow with UTA. Very, very thankful for that. It just makes sense. I am really pleased in the different, different attributes of this program. When we were going through our strategic planning process, I had different ideas. We all did. Cross-curricular, that was one. What I see in this, this STEM Academy model is really the template for what we're going to be doing with the whole district. Eliminating remediation, cross-curricular, project-based learning, that, to me, is where it's at for high school experience today, even before high school. So I'm very excited. I think this is something that can be transformational. Good title for, for you.
I can imagine that.
I, when, during the strategic planning process, we discussed that we were going to look at instructional model, models. And one of the things that I said at that time was, I don't necessarily want to just adopt a model. I want to look at models out there, take elements from what fits for us, and create a new model. And that's essentially what you're doing with the STEM Academy, and I'm really appreciative of that. As far as the, the resources, the dollars it will take, we, I, I think this board will be very supportive and meet, meet the need. We made a commitment with our strategic plan and our goals and our objectives that when the rubber hits the road, we've, we've got to come up with the dollars. And I think that's what our community is expecting. So very excited about it. I, I don't know, when I hear 100 students, and Ms. Solins touched on that, I think you'll, you'll create room. I hope it's adequate space. I'm a little bit concerned that, as I know through our bond package that we're increasing the capacity and have opportunity. When we're looking at a total of 400 more added, I, I hope we're okay and that we're not missing something down the road, especially not just on classroom space, but on just core services, cafeteria, theater, that type of thing. But with that said, I also think that 100 per class, this will be a great model. I see it being hugely successful, and I think we're going to need more. There's going to be a lot more demand, I think, than 100 per class, and that's going to make the, the admissions and application process very, very tough. And we did it with the early college high school. I know we'll do it again for this. But I think people are really going to be interested in doing this, and I'm glad to hear that we are going to support with transportation, that we can't, we can't let transportation hinder our progress for our kids' achievement. The one question, well, I guess I have two questions. One, I love the idea of cross-curricular. What I'm hearing is some of these, especially with the core classes, these kids are going to be with the, the general population of Martin with the, like with the Algebra II, pre-calc.
Actually, we are hoping that their core classes will be somewhat sheltered.
Their own.
And that, because the idea is that they will have STEM projects even in their English class there. So, okay.
Right. That's my vision of cross-curricular, and I wasn't sure how, how you could possibly accomplish that when you're in a general population class at the same time. It just wouldn't work. Well, that's good. That's good. And with the metrics, measuring the success of this, I think you've got some, some good indicators, and it will be nice to see the results. I would actually challenge you to put maybe some more thought into the metrics. I think there's a lot of successes that will come out of this that we can document with outcomes, measures, even with assessments, the state standardized tests. I'm, nobody's a fan. But seeing we are monitored and scored on those, wouldn't it be great to be able to monitor our subpopulation of our STEM kids to say, look what they're doing on these assessments as an example?
Sure.
And that's just one, just off, off the head. But I, I think there's probably other metrics that, that we can look at to truly quantify and qualify what we're doing here for advancement into the future. So, thank you very, very much. Looks like you have something you want to say.
Yeah, I'm, I apologize. I was just going to say that particularly Dr. Hale and some of the colleagues that he works with, we do have some expertise on our campus for assessing STEM education. And then we mentioned access to grant money being in HSI now. As we apply for more federal grants for programming such as this, writing in funding for external assessment is becoming more and more critical in those grants. So I just felt like it was worth mentioning that that's on our radar as well.
That's great. That's great. Thank you again. I know, I know you're excited. And I know you're all excited, and thank you for being dedicated. It is going to be a lot of work. It's, this is a ton to do in a short amount of time, but it's not like we haven't done that kind of thing before. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. Ms. Pena.
I'll make mine quick. I too wanted to thank you all. You know, Arlington's getting to be known as a very collaborative ISD, but also wanted to mention that our warriors have always been a bit of a maverick.
I wish we could end on that, Ms. Pena. It's pretty good, but Mr. Barron's got something and I got a little something. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Let's see. Oh, as a math teacher and a computer science teacher and a technology applications teacher, I certainly support the whole STEM process. I didn't want to come across that I didn't. I have a feeling, though, that with dual credit and IB and AP and early college high school and the Fine Arts Academy and the CTE place, we're going to be, be competing against ourselves. And it's almost going to be whoever gets the kids first is going to win. Somehow, we need to control how these kids get recruited so that they end up in the right place.
And that's part of our counseling and guidance. And I would go a step further there, Mr. Barron, and say that we would have more opportunities to serve more students. And we're going, we're going to have to have efforts, and Rick has mentioned this before, to make sure we're serving a greater amount of students in these wonderful opportunities we're creating and not just competing for the same students. And that's our task. That's really our challenge.
And I really do think we need to get them in the right place because they'll be happier that way.
Absolutely.
And they'll succeed.
And that's appropriate guidance and counseling. Absolutely.
I think that's a very smart comment. On your behalf, what I look forward to is working with the university too, because they're masters at enrollment management. And that's something that we don't talk a lot about in our district and in school districts. And so I'm hoping that as we keep working together, we can also work with their Student Affairs or Student Services area so that we can learn as well how to manage our own enrollment. And when you think about 2017 with the CTE building coming onboard, then 2018, the Fine Arts Center, you're right. There's a lot of great challenges ahead, but what great opportunities for our students. And we average about 7,100 to 7,600 students in grades 11 through 12. So there's ample students to work with. We just need to learn how to manage that enrollment properly.
Right. And I envision us at some point having an Eastern and a Western STEM.
Could happen.
Last, last one for me.
Okay.
Marlene.
Well, I was just going to make a comment.
Nope, hang on.
One of the things that Dr. Ferguson said to us.
Ms. Roddy, hold on just a second. Mr. Barron's still.
Oh, okay. I thought you said Marlene going in.
I did. I wasn't, you're going to answer the question, see?
Oh, I am. All right. Let me get back over here.
No, I would suggest that we take the word sheltered out of this process. Sheltered has a very special ed connotation, and we shouldn't be saying that in this same breath, unless the intent is to get special ed kids.
It's removed from our vocabulary.
Okay. I mean, that's just, when you first said it, I went, huh. Okay.
Well, sheltered in that they are a group that
I understand.
travels together and, and they take the same classes together.
They give another word.
And so that you can have a STEM focus in an English class. And, you know, some students might think, what are we doing in here if they are doing that? So.
Well noted.
It's a cohort.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Awesome program. Let me ask a couple of real quick questions. Ms. Solins answered the 100 per year. Perfect for that. Will all these students graduate with a STEM endorsement?
If they stay with it the four years of high school, yes. That would be their endorsement. They would be in the STEM. Well, I mean, you know, truly, any student could have that endorsement, but this definitely, yes, they would.
So if they stay with this, they would have this. I would ask for that to be added as, just to make sure it's a distinction that they will be receiving that endorsement. Those endorsements are important to the district. I know they will be receiving it, and you have that listed. I think you just add that to your list, that they will receive STEM endorsements. They can receive multiple, but we all know we're going to be, the amount of STEM endorsements we have are going to be a critical factor to the district in the future for that. You mentioned some software agreements, and I know when you get into some of these engineering classes, there's extra software that is needed, and sometimes that software can be added. Is there any way, and I'd ask Chad maybe from Technology, can we, because they will be in dual credits, is there any way to do a partnership of agreement? Because I know college students usually get much cheaper rates on the software. Is there a partnership capacity so that we're not having to front all the cost from the software agreements? Because, because engineering and STEM does require much more detailed software and technology.
Yes, I think it's always an option to enter into any kind of partnership and, and agreement for any, any type of initiative that we might want to entail. So certainly need to investigate that further and see what we might be able to do.
And I'm not expecting an answer right now, Chad. I'm just saying, Mr. Garcia, make sure y'all add that to your list of what you're, what you're looking at. Ms. Ferguson, you mentioned it, Bound for Success. I would imagine these students are on there. I would also imagine students graduating from this are going to be highly recruited, not just by UTA, but by others. So I would encourage UTA to find scholarship dollars for these students. Just, I'm putting it out there, Dr. Ferguson.
Absolutely.
Because I know you like them in the College of Science, but I'm sure University of North Texas and Texas A&amp;M and all the other schools would love to have them in their College of Science also.
Excellent comments, President Hogg. We, we have thought of that as well, and I would be lying if I didn't tell you that this STEM Academy, for our purposes, is certainly a recruitment tool.
Of course.
And we will be doing everything we can to encourage these students to attend the university right next door.
And Dr. Ferguson, we are too. We, because we, if they go to high school here, they go to college here, they're probably going to live here, and that's a good thing for the entire community.
I also wanted to echo what you said, just Principal Roddy, so that you hear it from UT Arlington as well, giving the students some sort of official STEM stamp, if you will. We would echo that. We are doing things like that at the university level as well. Students that are going through transformational programs and stick with them all the way through, we're noting it on transcripts. We're putting them in zero-credit hours designation so that they can be recognized and it shows up on the transcripts, graduation cords, you name it.
That's a great point. Great point, Dr. Ferguson. Mr. Garcia, I think when we come back, we need to have a greater detail. I'm a little worried about the transportation of what we're doing, because if we then are providing this for this program, do we then need to provide it for other ancillary programs that are at other high schools? So that's something, I'm not saying we don't, but I think we have to take a deep look as to what we're providing and how. And I know it's harder to do when we don't know where each student's coming from at HSI schools, but the transportation needs to be worked out in greater detail for us to make a final determination on that. And then the last thing I think we all need to come back and hear about, and we're going to support it, but we need to know what's the final cost going to be. All programs are awesome, but all programs cost money. So we all have to know exactly what the cost is going to be, where we're going to allocate it. And I know Ms. Powell and Dr. Kavasos are working to build this into the budget for this next year, and so I think we just have to take that realistic look of what's the dollar amount that this is going to cost us each year. Other than that, it's awesome, and I don't see any more lights from our colleagues. I thank you all for your time.
Sure.
Great program. We look forward to hearing more about it over the next year.
Well, we thank you for being such a kind audience, and rest assured, we're working with brilliant and very, very experienced people. And I'm not just talking about our folks and certainly UTA, but we also have key people like Michelle, our area superintendent, who's very experienced with high school, and we're going to tap into her assistance with helping with this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. As I said before, we even started, I encourage everyone to listen to this, and I know it'll be in the paper tomorrow. So it's a, it's a great program for all of us to have over there. It was due at 8:30, so she got the first half of it on her, on our article. We were trying to rush through there. Thank you so much. Next, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Dr. Ferguson, our UTA colleagues, you can, you don't have to stay for the rest. We're not talking anything else. But you can, or you can watch it on the world wide web. That's what we always say if you leave. Don't stream it while you're driving, though. Next, we'll move on to public hearing. We have no public hearing, so we'll go to open forum for agenda items. I don't have any cards this evening. Nope. So next, we'll move on to action items. First, we'll consider delegate, designation of official delegates to TASB 2014 Delegate Assembly. Hold on, Ms. Solins. I just had the paper. There we go. I'd just given away to Ms. Solins, and I got it back, and now I forgot it. Consider designation of official delegates to TASB 2014 Delegate Assembly. Evolving will ensure the association remains responsive to our district's needs and priorities and presents a strong voice on state and national issues that affect our school board. At the assembly, our representatives will hear reports from the TASB Board of Trustees and standing committees. In design, in designating the district's delegate and alternate, TASB asks that we send experienced board members who are well-informed on a wide range of issues affecting public education. Ms. Pena serves as a delegate for the, by virtue of her TASB Director's position. Mr. Barron serves as a delegate for 2013. Dr. Raish serves as the alternate delegate for 2013, 14. At this time, we need a motion for a delegate and an alternate.
President Hogg, I'd like to nominate President
President Hogg, I'd like to nominate President Hogg as our delegate and Keisha Mays as alternate.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Solins to designate myself as delegate, as the delegate, and Ms. Mays as the alternate. And a second by Dr. Reich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees voting affirmative. Ms. Mays will have fun times listening to that and speaking on behalf of our district. Next, we'll move on to the 2015 legislative agenda. Dr. Kavasos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And at this time, we'd like to review our legislative agenda. The committee has done work on this project as well. And Cindy is ready to present our legislative agenda. I don't know if there are comments from the committee at this point, or... Okay, Cindy.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos, good evening. The legislature, Texas State Legislature, will convene on January 13, and they will meet for 140 days through June 1. And we've learned over the years that it's very important for us to actively engage with our legislators and others in decision-making positions, to inform them of our position on matters that impact our students and our operations, that it will be very key to making sure that our voice is heard in the legislative session. As we engage with our legislators, we inform them and empower them to better represent us on various issues that come up throughout the session. So we have drafted a legislative agenda for the 2015 session. The board discussed the issues that would be included on that agenda in May. We took input from the board at that time. We've come back, and over the summer, we've worked on expanding some of the detail included with the agenda. And we have reviewed that with our governance committee. And so we have, I will just briefly go through the major topics here. We have listed as our primary objectives for the 2015 session, local control, preserving the provisions of HB 5, and providing relief from unfunded mandates. So we have broken our legislative agenda into four broad categories, the first being accountability and assessment. Then we have school finance, school choice, and pre-kindergarten. We can go through these in detail if you want, or I can simply take questions since the board has already discussed these items.
Ms. Solins?
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Powell, for bringing this forth this evening. The governance committee has gone through this in detail, and this has been available to all of the trustees. Does anyone need to go through each of these individually this evening, or is ready to move to questions?
I think we're ready, Ms. Solins.
Perfect. Thank you.
At this time, we'll take questions from colleagues.
Yeah. Ms. Powell, we talked earlier this evening, of course, this legislative process is going to be something fluid because things will change over time as we get further and further into the system. So this is where we are today with the legislative agenda. Of course, things may change. So if there's no, I would like to go ahead and make a motion, please, to accept the legislative agenda as presented. Thank you. This by committee doesn't require a second.
Perfect. We have a motion by the committee with no second. At this time, we'll take questions. Dr. Reich.
I don't really have any questions. Just a couple of comments. I think I commend the committee. I wasn't really part in drafting this a whole lot. The board, Ms. Powell, our legislative consultants, and putting together a really good agenda. It's very solid. There's many things that are carryovers from the last session. We're going to keep on plugging along, and we're going to get our way, by golly. One of these days, we will. And as Ms. Solins said, it is fluid processors. There's going to be things that'll end up as part of our legislative action that might not specifically be listed in the agenda. The next steps after this will be to educate our local legislators and beyond on these issues, working with our consultants, hopefully finding sponsors to actually put out some of these pieces in bill language and being proactive rather than reactive. So I'm looking forward to it. It'll be an interesting session. The only other comment that I want to make is the amount of unfunded mandates to the tune of $70 million on our budget each year, I think is something very important for us to be aware of as trustees, as well as our community at large. That is something we need to communicate to our legislators. That is burdensome. And I don't know what the numbers were last session, but I think it's probably gone up by a good $20 million.
It has gone up largely because of the new TRS mandate contribution. So yes, it has gone up.
Yeah. So I look forward to hopefully a very productive and active session in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. As Dr. Reich mentioned, we will be briefing the local legislators, and we start on the 13th with the first one, and with the candidates and the current legislators. So.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Barron.
We'll get a one-on-one with all of them.
That's what's needed. And I think the most valuable thing on there is Dr. Reich's listing the unfunded mandates, because they keep saying every year, we didn't put any actually in there. And amazingly enough, they do. They keep adding more unfunded mandates. To the committee and Ms. Powell, I think this legislative agenda is very detailed. If I think about where we've come from five years ago on our first legislative agenda in '09, we probably had some plagiarism from some other districts, but it was the first creation of a legislative agenda we'd had in a while. So it was a great, great piece and got us started. I would ask, I think, with this legislative agenda, and I think we did it last year, we do need to make sure we create a one-page executive summary that highlights, because we all know if anyone has short attention spans, it's our legislators. So we do need to make sure there is a simple, easy one-page read sheet for them to help them get the idea of where we're going. And I think that's how we rolled it out last year. We had a one-page sheet, and then they could look at more detail as the agenda went through so that when their staffers started diving deep into it, they saw exactly where we were coming from is a critical factor. So I think that would be a critical factor as we start talking through the legislators, let them understand what we're building this for. Other than that, I think it's a great agenda. With that, any further discussion? We're ready to vote. At this time, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees voting affirmative. We have agenda. Thank you to the committee for all your hard work, and Ms. Powell and your staff. Next, we'll move on to discussion action. Considering possibly act on a charge to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee to oversee the 2014 bond program. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. We have a draft of the CBOC charge that's been provided to the board members. Significant rewrites are redlined. And one thing to point out is that the first paragraph has changed somewhat. That the committee is established to provide transparency and enhance public confidence in the use of the bond money. That's the number-one priority for this committee, is that they are the transparency between the board and the citizens. Did you have a briefing, Ms. Powell?
I can make a couple of brief comments. You know, we are all very aware that on May 10, our voters approved a $663.1 million bond proposition. The bond proposition covers new construction, renovations and improvements, technology, fine arts, transportation. Throughout the entire information process, the spring, the board, and administration were very open, very committed, very public about the fact that we are committed to transparency in this process. We had a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee with our 2009 bond program, and that committee, I believe, has added tremendous value to what we've done in the last five years. I think that this has been a big success for us. We actually have on our agenda this evening, on the consent agenda, a purchase, the first purchase out of the bond program, and it is copiers, 42, 43 copiers to the tune of, I think, $892,000. So we are beginning to make our purchases. We've been evaluating architect submissions, and we will be bringing those to the board the next board meeting. And so we are actively moving forward with the work in the bond package. And so we want to move forward with appointing a bond oversight committee to monitor the progress of the bond program. We did send the board, we started really with the 2009 charge, and we redlined it and have shared that with the board, Community Engagement Committee, and also the full board. To show you what's different, I'll highlight a couple of things in here in particular, some of which are the same and some that are different. We are recommending that there be 11 members on the committee. Again, that's the same number we had with 2009. In looking around at some other districts that have even larger bond packages than we have, they typically have somewhere in this range, anywhere from as few as nine that I've seen up to around 20. And we think that this is a good number of folks to work with. And so there are 11 recommended here. Committee members, we've added a statement that says, and it's the one here that says, committee members, their relatives, their employers are prohibited from having contracts or pending contracts with the district for the bond program during the term of the committee or their term on the committee. We think that that's significant. So there's no question about representation on the committee. We've also, I can move on down to the next page, some of the things that have not changed. The meetings are open to the public, and we post the dates in those on our website. The committee meets generally once a quarter with senior staff that is responsible for the various areas of the committee. And it requires a two-thirds, two-thirds of the committee membership be present in order to take any action. If there's fewer than two-thirds of the members there, they can meet and hear information. They can't take any action, can't conduct any business. Any of the votes that they take are decided by a majority vote. We anticipate that the committee will begin its work in October. And I've got a timeline I'll show you in just a moment. And we also anticipate that they will complete their work in January of 2020. It's a five-year bond program that should end roughly December of 2019. And so we anticipate that immediately following that, we would expect that this committee would wrap up its work. In particular, the items that the committee is charged with include, move this up just a bit, reviewing the report that the Capital Need Steering Committee presented to the board outlining the recommended projects in the bond program or for the bond program so that they have a good understanding of what the bond program encompasses. We also recommend that we will review with them the process that we will use to solicit professional design services and construction services and contractors for the bond program. That was helpful to this past committee. We will review with them reports on the projects as we move along, including the progress, planned implementation dates, and projected completion dates. We will also review with them expenditures, how the expenditures compare to budget, and what we anticipate any estimated additional costs are for completing projects. One of the new additions that we've made is this one right here, review hub utilization on facilities project. This board has expressed a commitment to increasing hub participation and being very transparent about that. So that information is being captured and will be reported to this committee and also to the board as we move through the program. Another addition is that we will have this committee review any internal and external audits conducted on the bond program to make sure that, again, for it to be transparent with the community. Here's an audit that's been performed. Here were the findings, and then here's how administration is responding to those findings. We also have added a communications component here, just simply that the committee will review and provide input on the communications, our communications with the public regarding the progress of the bond package. The committee will vote on matters that we bring to them on expenditures of funds. We've had several cases in 2009 with the 2009 committee where we were able to come to them and recommend that we do an additional project and pay for that out of savings perhaps that we had in the bond program. And so we would take input from the committee. They would actually vote on it and present the results of that vote to the board. The committee will report to the board once every six months or more frequently if necessary. And then also, they will coordinate with us. We will maintain a page on our website to display the information we give to that committee and the dates of the committee meetings. So I'm going to switch over here. We have one slide that shows a timeline for selecting the committee. If the board approves the charge this evening, we will go ahead and post the charge and an application online this evening for the CBOC membership. And we'll leave that application posted through September 5. We anticipate that we would be at a point where the Board Community Engagement Committee could bring back a recommendation to the full board on September 18 for appointments to that committee. And then we would like to have an orientation with that group on October 7 to cover what's in the bond package and cover the charge itself and the purpose of the committee and give them some of the background information that they'll need in order to start carrying out their duties. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Perfect. With that, thank you, Ms. Powell. And Dr. Reich, I see your light. Okay? Perfect. Go right ahead.
I just want to let the board know also, with regard to orientations, we discussed as committee that the, with the extensive scope that we have of understanding this bond and all its complexity and detail, and the Capital Need Steering Committee and their actions, that any new committee members that come on on the rotating basis will have an orientation meeting that will be separate from this. And I would assume that existing members could also attend that again if they want a refresher. But it's just to keep the committee moving forward in a decent clique, it's kind of necessary. And then also, the application is something that the Community Engagement Committee had input on as well to make any edits on it. So we've looked at that, just so you know.
To our Community Engagement team, that's a great charge. It's a charge, and we always hope charges get better each time we do them. And this one definitely got better. With that, Mr. Barron, I know you're chair of that committee. If you'd like to make a motion, I think people would be willing to receive one.
Coming from committee, I move that we accept the proposed charge to the CBOC.
Perfect. I have a motion from committee, not requiring a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees voting affirmative. We have a charge for the CBOC, and please post the applications. Thank you, Ms. Powell, for all your work. Next on the agenda is items to be drawn from consent agenda. Are there any items to be drawn from consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Tonight, we'll be considering items listed on your agenda under consent item. Ms. Powell shared donations bids with us earlier. And at this, I'll pass it over to Ms. Powell.
Great. We have two bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening. In both cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. The donations do total $43,586, and that is also our year-to-date total, since this is our first meeting of the new year, so.
It's good. It's a good start, Ms. Powell.
It is a good start.
Good start. Thank you, Ms. Powell. We always thank the community. We've got to start from somewhere on our donations for the year. So at that, I'll take, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Dr. Reich.
Second.
And I have a second by Ms. Peña. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees voting affirmative. We have a passed consent agenda. Next, we'll move on to discussion items. Gibson Consulting report on 2014 student service- Gibson Consulting report on 2014 student survey. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And as part of our strategic plan and our continued need and expectation to gain feedback from the people we serve, which are our students, we have surveyed our elementary, junior high, and high school students, select grade levels. And Dr. Rapaport is here with Gibson Consulting, and she has the results of those surveys. And thank you for your work ahead of time.
Thank you, thanks for having me. How do, oh, we got it, okay. Thanks for having me, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to share with you the results from the second-year survey administration. I have a lot of data to share with you, a lot of results. Please feel free to either slow me down or speed me up at the pace that you prefer.
And Dr. Rapaport, we may during this, as looking, knowing this presentation, there may be some points we may want to take a couple of questions in between.
Yes, absolutely.
If that's okay with you.
Absolutely, I prefer that, thank you. I'm only going to briefly touch on the actual approach we used in the survey. I presented it for all the detail last year for those of you that were here. But as I go through each finding section, I will slow down and explain what the questions were and how the students responded. So, again, the design of this survey, the purpose of this survey was to obtain input from your students on key measures that are related to the district's strategic plan. There were five areas, quality of instructional practices, school safety, lifelong learning environment, preparation for college in the workforce, and quality of facilities. We did this survey for the second time this year for all twelfth graders in the district. And so, we can look at change from last year to this year for twelfth graders. And this year, we expanded the survey, we scaled it up. We included all sixth, eighth, and tenth graders in the survey effort. For that second group, we did shorten the survey. So, all five constructs were included on the grade twelve survey, but the sixth, eighth, and ten only included quality of instructional practices and school safety. Just again, briefly, for twelfth graders, it was the same instrument as last year, no changes. For sixth, eighth, and ten, we did tweak the wording for sort of age appropriateness and so that the sixth graders could understand the questions. But the questions were the same, the constructs were comparable. Everything could be compared from grade to grade. We followed the same, the same approach we used last year. We scaled it up, we sent materials to all of the schools. I have to thank your school staff. We had a survey liaison at every single solitary school in the district. They were amazing, they were incredible, they worked hard. They got all their, really, almost all of your students that were targeted for the survey did complete it. Each student was given a unique login ID so they could only complete the survey once. All surveys were completed online. We had over fifteen thousand surveys completed in the district. And this was an eighty-eight percent response rate, which was really incredible. It was actually an increase from last year, which I didn't think was possible. Last year, I think, was eighty-one or something like that. And it wasn't just one grade level that did such a tremendous job, all grade levels did tremendous job. We had a little bit of a higher response rate among grades six and eight, and that's only because they're easier to target. They're all in contained classrooms and they're easier to find. The tenth and twelfth graders are all throughout the school. All of the schools had tremendous response rates. They're, almost all elementaries and almost all middles had over an eighty percent response rate for their students. So, it really was an incredible job and kudos to your staff for helping to get that response rate. And what's important about that is it means that the data we have is representative of the students in those grades. And, you know, I ran all the statistics, the, the data that we have on ethnicity and socioeconomic status, all of those things, the survey sample is representative of the district population in those grades. So, we can, we feel really confident that we heard the voice of your students. The data that we show you is robust estimates of how those kids really feel, students really feel. We did some data cleaning. We're familiar with teenagers trying to thwart the efforts of researchers. And we did, we did find some responses that were just completed too quickly to be considered valid, some that were completed in the middle of the night, and some that were clearly exaggerating responses. They answered yes to every single question, even if it was impossible to answer yes to every single question. So, we only dropped two hundred, I mean, out of fifteen thousand, that's really negligible. And so, our, this is our final analytic sample in each grade. For quality of instructional practices, I'll remind you, we have this construct for all of the grades. This is going to be the first area, I'm going to share results with you. The questions, there's three different sets of questions. The first, we asked them, "Thinking about this year, tell us about the quality of instruction," oh, sorry, "the quality of teaching at your school in each subject area." And sixth graders weren't asked about languages other than English, but other than that, they were all asked the same question. The response scale was poor, okay, good, or excellent. And what I'm going to show you here is the percentage of students who answered good or excellent. And in that gray bar on the side, you see last year's responses for twelfth graders. What you see pretty much right away is that this year's twelfth graders answered pretty much exactly the same way as last year's twelfth graders. The color coding here just represents good is higher, and as you go down, it gets yellow, orange, and then it gets red. So, you see the same ordering and very similar rates. And when I populate this for the grades six, eight, and ten, I'm going to just sort of highlight a couple of patterns here. One is that English was consistently rated as, well, I should say, the highest proportion of students rated English as good or excellent, quality of instruction as good or excellent. And you see math and languages other than English are at the bottom for most of the grades. Sixth was a little bit different. For sixth graders, math was, more students rated math as good or excellent. But another pattern, or I should say, lack of consistency that I think is important here, is that science, you have high percentages of students feeling that instruction in science is good or excellent in sixth and eighth grade. And it drops pretty, pretty, it's a pretty large drop at grade ten compared to the rest of these results. It kind of stands out at you. It jumps back up a little bit at grade twelve, so that's something to consider. Otherwise, we had much consistency. We also asked students, "How often were the following statements true for you in each of your subject areas?" And the statements I'm going to show you are statements that we got from your district leadership. We talked to them about, "What do you want to see in the classroom? What are the instructional strategies or the classroom environments that you're striving for your teachers to have in the classroom?" And so, I'm going to walk you through this. These are the grade twelve results. The items on the left-hand side are the questions that the students were answering. Teachers held my attention, I was given choice in demonstrating knowledge, I was asked to show what I know in writing. Teachers stopped to check my understanding before moving on to the next concept. I felt comfortable asking questions, et cetera. And the response scale was never to always. So, what I'm going to do here is sort of mark this three-point-oh. A mean of three-point-oh is going to basically tell you that most students are answering that these things are happening most of the time. Some are saying it's always, some are saying it's sometimes. I think that's kind of a good threshold for where you want to be looking to see this data. You want to see students saying that these things are happening most of the time. The different color bars are the different subject areas. So, they answered these questions four different times. So, we can look at, I have grade and I have subject area. So, first, we're just going to start with the twelfth graders. And this mirrors exactly what we saw last year. We're seeing basically that most of these items are not reaching that three-point-oh threshold that you want to see. So, there's some room for improvement there. And you're also seeing that all of the items are rated lower in math. Again, that math is coming out. You are seeing, "Show what I know in writing," and "English is meeting that three-point-oh threshold," which makes sense. And so, I'm about to scroll now to tenth grade, and what I want you to do is just sort of fuzz your eyes over a little bit and watch what happens to the bars. I'm going to go to tenth grade, and you see they all kind of move up a little bit. More of the bars are exceeding that three-point-oh threshold. And I'm going to go to eighth grade, a little bit more, and sixth grade, a little bit more. So, as the grades go down, you have students rating these things a little bit higher and a little bit higher. The other pattern that may or may not have jumped out at you is that those bottom three, "That teachers checked my understanding, I felt comfortable, in-class activities helped me learn," those are consistently rated higher. And choice, I was given a choice in how I demonstrated knowledge. It was worded differently for the younger kids. But "show what I know in writing," those are consistently the lowest-rated items.
Dr. Rapaport, let me stop you real quick. You said that mirrors last year?
Yes.
Is there anything, so?
For the twelfth graders, we didn't have this data last year for sixth, eighth, and ten.
Okay, so for twelfth graders, you didn't see any kind of change or adjustment really?
Not for twelfth graders, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there was one more section of questions that fell under this quality of instructional practices, and I'm calling it student engagement. That's sort of an arbitrary term that I threw up there, but these are, these are indicators of students being engaged. They find their courses challenging, they enjoy learning, they're given opportunities to use technology in their course material. And again, you see very similar data among your twelfth graders compared to last year. "My classes were boring" is a negatively worded item, so that one's in red. So, it's actually good that you have thirty-four percent saying that because it's less than half are saying that classes were boring. The other items are positively worded items. And what you see overall is that less than half of the students are saying that these things are true most of the time or always. And so, when I showed this to you last year, I said, "Here, we can see there's room for improvement," right? You have fewer than half of your students indicating that these things are true or often, are true most of the time or always. And these are things that are indicative of student engagement. What I do want to point out here is this pretty substantial ten percentage point jump in the, being given opportunities to use technology in your core subjects. And so, what you've seen so far already is that the data is very consistent from last year. It's hard to move a percentage ten points in one year as you're seeing. And that's, to me, that jumped out as something, that was a positive finding and a big change from last year. When I populate all the other grades, there's a lot of data here. I encourage you to take a look at it. The only thing that really jumped out at me, that was consistent pretty much in terms of there being fewer than half of the students responding most of the time or always to most of these items. This is one that jumped out at me in terms of a pattern. Teachers explained why the things I was learning mattered outside of the classroom. That percentage of students who agreed with that most of the time or always is consistently going down as grade level is going up. And that's as concepts are becoming more and more difficult and not being connected to the real world, you know, as easily. So, that was something that, that struck me. I'm going to move on to the next area unless there's questions. Okay, so the next area was school safety. This was also measured in grades six, eight, ten, and twelve, so we can look at data across all the grades. The first section is very straightforward. We just asked them, "How safe do you feel?" And their answers could have been not safe, somewhat safe, mostly safe, or very safe. And we asked them in classrooms, in locker rooms, around the school, in hallways, et cetera. And so, all we did here is we took the percent who said that they feel not safe. So, on a four-point scale, they answered a one. And what you see again is very similar results from last year. The, the highest percentage of students who feel unsafe, feel unsafe outside the school and in locker rooms and in bathrooms, very similar compared to last year. And when you populate the other grades, what you see is that the grade eight and ten follow a very similar pattern. But in grade six, there's something going on in terms of students feeling unsafe. This is about one in five students is indicating that they don't feel safe around the school or in the bathrooms at the elementary level. So, that's something that, you know, warrants some additional investigation and looking perhaps at the school-level data to see what's going on at those schools. The second measure of school safety was, we use an existing validated survey scale for looking at school safety. And it consists of two separate sort of sets of questions. One is about fighting, bullying, teasing, and I'm calling that school safety. The other one has to do with staff, and staff respecting me, listening to me, being interested in what I have to say, and I'm calling that staff respect. Again, they agree, strongly disagree to strongly agree, went to four scale. We took the average of those items, and so, higher scores are more positive things. I put all of the items on here for you to take a look at, but I'm going to skip through those. Those are the staff items. And here are the results. The gray bar at the end is last year's grade twelve students for comparison. You have the four-point scale on the, on the vertical line. So, on a four-point scale, I'm placing this sort of arbitrary midpoint at two-point-five just to give you a reference point. And what you're seeing is students overall across the district by grade level are feeling above the midpoint on school safety, and it's not varying much by grade. And you're seeing that staff respect is a little bit higher across the board. It's certainly higher at sixth grade than it is at the other grade levels, and it's comparable, the data is comparable to last year. Okay? Lifelong learning, this came up as a goal, a primary goal of the district is to foster lifelong learners, to have cultures at the schools that foster lifelong learners. And so, we developed this construct last year with these items. And we asked, I think there was a set of fifteen questions, and we ran some factor analysis to figure out, were these items really hanging together? And we found they were hanging together in sort of two different ways. One set of questions had to do with things people do individually, and the other had to do with things people do with others. So, these were the items. The individual construct was, "My school encourages people to, students to be curious, to be excited about learning, to pursue different interests, to be creative." And the "with others" construct was, "My school encourages students to build leadership schools, become involved in mentoring, participate in school clubs." This was very consistent and very robust finding across the district by grade level, across school. I'm sorry, this is only grade twelve now. This is one of the constructs that we only had grade twelve. The average was above the midpoint. It was, it was similar to last year. The blue bar is last year, the red bar is this year. When you collapse across all of the schools in the district, you're just getting this very basic two-point-nine average score. The average at the school level only varied from two-point-eight to three-point-oh. So, it was a very robust construct. I think you can say here, you have schools that are fostering lifelong learners. It's robust, it's similar to last year, and it's similar across all schools. Okay. Preparation for college of the workforce, are we moving on? Okay. So, the first thing we did is we asked students a lot of questions that were yes or no questions, that had to do with applications to college, scholarships, things they do with counselors, things they do, things that would prepare them for careers, things that would prepare them for school, for college. And the next set of slides I'm going to show you are different ways we sort of took those bunches of questions to look at what they're saying. But the first group of questions was about applying to college. We asked them about public universities, two-year colleges. I think there were four different questions about applying to college. And we found, the same thing we found last year is that eighty percent of your students are applying to college of some type. And when you take that eighty percent and you break it out by, is it a two-year college they're applying to? Is it a four-year college they're applying to? Or are they applying to both two-year and four-year colleges? What you see is, these are your twenty percent who aren't applying, as I showed you in the last graph. About a quarter of the students are applying to two-year colleges only. Twenty-seven, twenty-nine percent are applying to and for-year colleges, and twenty-nine percent, twenty-six percent are applying to for-year colleges. So, these are mutually exclusive categories. Students can only belong to one of these four groups. And so, it helps us to see where our kid's going. And then, what we can do is we can use this variable, and, and I'm going to show you more data, and I'm going to use this sort of slicer, if you call it that, to show you other data and what students are doing to prepare for college and career. So, before I move on, does everybody, okay, so the blue is last year, the red is this year. Very stable from last year. So, first, we looked at these application tendencies or application rates by ethnicity. And what you see here, this is the same pattern we showed you last year. I don't know if this will ring a bell for you, but the first thing that stood out with me here is that among your Hispanic students, you have an over-representation of Hispanic students in the no-application and two-year-only categories, and an under-representation in the two- and four-year and four-year-only categories. And that's in contrast to your Asian and black students who are, as you can see, their bars are higher in the two- and four-year categories and lower in the no-applications and two-year categories. And so, it was just one of the patterns that stood out to us. I do want to show you what changed, how, you know, was that stable from last year or did that change from last year? So, here, we're looking at change in, in the percentages of students who are in these categories. So, for no-applications, you want to see a decrease.
Can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
On that, and I may be getting ahead of myself, but on the ones that, where you show the applications to college by ethnicity, what's the completion rate? I mean, they could apply, but do they finish?
Right. This is just seniors telling us about themselves before they even go.
Okay.
So, this is self-reported, I have applied. This isn't even validated by actual applications. This is purely survey data.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So, among the students who are not applying to college, from last year to this year, we saw decreases and increases based on different students. But we did see pretty consistently decreases in students applying to two-year-only colleges and an increase in them applying to two- and four-year colleges. Among students who are only applying to four-year colleges, we saw a six percentage point decrease in white students who are applying to only four-year colleges. And you see some of that is made up over there in the increase in three percent who are not applying to college at all. So, there were some changes there in terms of your application rates, even though overall, you're seeing a consistent eighty percent application.
Is that related to volume of students at all?
It can be related to a lot of different things. It could be related to school initiatives. Some schools I know are having all students getting applications in and others might not be. So, there's a lot of things that may be underlying this. I'm about to show you another thing, which is, that breaks this down by GPA, which is another way of looking at it.
If I could ask though, if, if we had a decline in student population, sub-pop, would that?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. If the denominator changes, no, that wouldn't affect it because we're just looking at the percentage within the year.
Thank you.
I have another question. Not today, but in the future, as we move toward the career tech, the opportunities that were the opportunities that we're offering to our students, we may have no application because they've already gotten their certification to begin work. So in the future, we may be able to measure that as well.
Yes.
Which may be what's doing in no applications portion.
Yes, that would be an important thing to add to the survey.
Ms. Fain, I think that's a good point. I think it'd be good to at least be able to designate students that are enrolled in career tech, so you could maybe put that as an extra little caveat section to be able to track that. I think it's a good idea.
Well, and what's powerful about the data that we have is because we give students that unique ID to enter, to fill out the survey.
So we could track, there you go. That's a great point.
We have their, we have their ethnicity data, we have their GPA. If you were to give us an indicator variable, we could look at it that way.
This may be an area we'd like to look at by high school.
Yes, and one thing we are doing currently is creating scorecards for every school. So every high school will have their data, every middle school will have their eighth graders, and every elementary school will have their sixth graders.
And I think the intention was, is the board, we're looking at as a whole, I know Dr. Kavassos and his staff are picking it apart, but I, I think it's not a bad idea, Dr. Seh, to maybe send us so we could see.
Absolutely, and those reports by campus are not yet available. And these are all, they're, they're still working on them. One thing that, that we're doing, I think this, this year differently is we're asking Gibson to come back and, 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 uh, train our principals and go into a deeper look at each campus and the alignment in these questions now that we have not just seniors, but all schools represented. To, uh, take a deeper dive in that and also to set goals and things like that that are realistic, but also measurable and high yield. So that's something we've talked about, uh, them coming to a principal meeting in September, I think.
Yeah, and we're gonna bring with us all of these data points disaggregated by school.
It could be very doable that we would provide additional support to high schools at certain times of the year. Almost like a get out the vote campaign, only it's a get out the college application campaign.
That's correct.
So this one links to the presentation we heard today about the STEM Academy, so I was excited to hear that. But, um, this is the same graph I just showed you, but these are, we took students' GPA and we categorized them as an A, a B, or a C student based on their GPA. And we did this last year and these may look familiar to you, and the pattern is the same as last year. Um, but what you see is, so for students who have an A average, you're seeing that the majority of them are applying to two and four-year colleges. And when I show you the students with a B GPA, you see that start, that distribution starts to even out across all four categories. And when I show you students who have a C average, you see that that distribution shifts and more of them are not applying at all, or applying to only two-year colleges. Uh, and it's just a nice, um, it helps to explain a little bit of what's going on in some of those earlier graphs. The other thing here that jumps out at me, it was, um, it, and I don't have circles to help highlight it. But if you look at those A students and you look at the red bars, those are the Hispanic students. You have a lot of Hispanic students who are high-achieving A students. I think that's, oh, it's like a 15% of them are only applying to two-year colleges and about 10% are not applying at all. And you can just see that their, their bars are higher in the none and only two categories across every GPA and lower in the A, um, two and four and only four, so.
Were these self-report numbers or did you go right into the system and get GPAs?
The GPA is from the system.
Good.
What, Mr. Barron, you're saying high school students wouldn't report? Exactly.
Okay, so there were a couple other items about, um, things that students can do to help prepare for college and things they can do to help prepare for career. Four of the items had to do with working with a school counselor. So have you done any of these four things? Yes or no to each one? So students could have zero of the four, one of the four, two of the four, three of the four, or four of the four. And there was a full range across the board. And so we, we looked at the mean on that scale of zero to four and broke it out by that, the student's application status. And what you saw last year was that counselors, uh, or students had indicated about between two and three of these things that they were doing. And there wasn't much variation depending on their application status, a little bit. Those students who are only applying to four-year colleges are working with the counselors a little bit less. What you saw this year was actually an increase across the board in students reporting, working with counselors. So there was a general increase in the number of things that students were saying yes to. And this is gonna become a pattern in the next couple of slides that I show you. There, uh, was another set of items that were student actions, things that college-bound activities students could do, like taking AP classes, applying for scholarships, uh, going, visiting a go center. And then there were career-bound things that students could be doing. I know the meeting with an, uh, adult at the school to talk about a career. And so this, the college bound, um, could range from zero to six, and the career bound could range from zero to three. And again, you see this increase from last year in the average number of things that students reported saying yes to on the, on the college-bound items. And for, and it's across the board. You see the two and four-year and, and only four-year groups are doing more of them on average, but everybody was doing more than they were doing last year. And on the career bound, there weren't as many, um, items that they could select. They could select three of them. And again, you see an increase from last year in the things that students are saying that they're doing. Uh, the final group of items were things that adults, not only counselors, but adults at the school, um, can do for you. Or the staff support for college or staff support for career. So different items of meeting with adults to talk about career and items for talking about, um, college. And again, you see, uh, a little increase. Sorry, here's the college-bound items. Again, the students to two and four-year applications are doing these things at a higher rate, but everybody's pretty much doing them more than they were last year. Uh, that's sort of true for this group. And the career bound, again, a little bit more, um, this year than last year. And the last section was, uh, the quality of facilities. Again, this was 12th graders only. Last year I showed you a really big matrix with all these colors and everything. I think it was a little overwhelming. So this year I decided to just take out the big picture. Um, there were four sections we asked about: cleanliness, equipment and furniture, space and buildings, grounds and maintenance. And, uh, we looked at the percent of students who answered mostly or always true. We had very consistent results from last year. There were some moderate improvements, nothing huge, and there were really no major declines, no declines at all. The big picture from the cleanliness questions was that there's a little bit of room for improvement. Um, most students agreed that classrooms are clean, about half agreed that common areas and hallways are clean, and only 25% agreed that bathrooms are clean. I think that was exactly the same as last year. Um, equipment and furniture received high marks. Um, 66% or more agreed on all of the items, that library resources are sufficient, technology's in good order, computers have the right software, sports equipment is in working condition. Space and buildings, uh, there's some room for improvement there. Students were reporting that hallways are crowded and there's still too much traffic in and out of the parking lot. Lunch lines are still long, there's still not enough tables at lunch. I don't think these are things that are gonna change that much in a year and, and, uh, so it's not surprising. Um, and there were high marks on science labs, computers, and sufficiency of equipment. And for grounds and building maintenance, um, high marks across the board, fields, buildings, rooms are all in good condition, everything looks good, everything's functioning properly. The only item that wasn't highly rated was building temperature being comfortable. Kids are cold or hot, I don't know which one. Um, and I tried to just sort of synthesize across all of that data, uh, what were the consistencies and what were the differences? Um, for the quality of instruction, we saw English is consistently high, students are comfortable asking questions. Um, there's room for improvement in writing opportunities and in math, instructional strategies in math. And improvement in use of strategies that increased student engagement. Across grades, science was lower in grade 10, that was notable. Math was rated high in grade six and then dropped, that was notable. Um, and as I mentioned, teachers are less frequently explaining why concepts matter as grade level is increasing and concepts are becoming more difficult. There was really very little change on measures from seniors from last year to this year. There was stability on all of these measures of quality of instruction, um, but a notable increase in that percent of students who are using technology in the classroom. For, um, school safety consistencies, we saw the school safety survey, the results were very similar across grade levels. All of the constructs were above the midpoint. Uh, everybody was higher on staff respect. And, um, the differences were that grade six was a little bit higher than everybody else at staff respect. But the biggest difference here was the grade six, uh, safety concern or issue, um, with safety outside the school and in the bathrooms. Lifelong learning, no changes observed, stable construct. This is a strong finding for your district. Uh, students feel they feel their environment fosters lifelong learning. And for applications, stable application rates. Um, we just went over all this, so maybe I'll just kinda, I'm gonna keep going. I think we're good. Does anybody have any questions?
Dr. Rappaport, thank you. It's a, it's a great presentation, I think, especially for only being year two. It's a, there's a, we see a lot that can be done with this. Um, not seeing any lights, I'll, I'll take a second. And Dr. Kavassos, do we have, when this comes out for each campus, will this be included in their campus improvement plans? And, and how are they tracking so we can see improvement? And then from that level, how staff plan to track so that we can see needs to make improvement? Like the constantly sixth grader's not feeling safe or low in languages other than English that are being taught. What's, what's the plan on that from a staff perspective?
Good question. And so, uh, this is the first year we've done the sixth, eighth, and 10th graders, right? So this is our baseline data. And with baseline data, there's, there's a couple of, of important things that need to happen. Part of the reason that they'll be coming to principals and training principals is because that's new for elementary and junior high in terms of just receiving the data and understanding all the components and the complexities and all that. But yes, to then identify those things that we can have high yield and make a difference really within a year. And that those are more narrow in terms of what you can affect, I think, within a year. So there's that whole understanding for those principals and those schools really at this year, and that's part of the work. We're also gonna work with them to set realistic goals and things like that. I think there's a lot of value in the reporting and the analysis that they've done and then informing what we can affect and what's realistic to affect. So that's one. And with the eventual goal of being, this being part of our scorecard. And picking those items that are high yield, like engagement and things like that, college applications. But for the first step in this is to make sure the principals understand it and it's new to those, uh, all those elementary and junior highs. For seniors and, and the high schools that have dealt with it, it's a deeper dive. And this is a continual improvement and work in progress in terms of analyzing the data. There's so much there, but some of it really just sticks out and, and it's, they're easy, I think, to, to, to address. Uh, they will include some of that in the, in their campus plans if that's a big area of need. And that's where the campus analysis is really important. In some campuses, some campuses may be skewing some of these results, right? And so if it's not a big area of need, we don't wanna make them put it in their campus plan and focus on something that, that they shouldn't, they should be focused on improving something else. Um, so where it's appropriate, yes, they will include in their campus plan. The, the big first step for us is to train our principals and understand the data and what's meaningful.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. Ms. Mays.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Um, I have two questions. Um, one is, I'll just piggyback off of what Dr. Kavassos said. If this is our baseline and we had targeted individuals for our surveys, then how do you move forward in measuring, are we doing the same targeted group? Are we going to have a different random target group? And if that's the case, then how are we measuring that if this is our baseline?
And I'll, I'll take a side of answering that question first, but I think that, uh, we, we're gonna measure sixth graders again, right? But they're not obviously the same students. And so what we wanna see is that as we improve in our school district, different areas, that that's actually having an effect. So the next time the sixth graders, they'll be surveyed in, uh, two years, when they become eighth graders, I guess. Uh, again, and we'll be able to make some comparisons that way. But we wanna make sure we target sixth, eighth, and 10th because those are, those transitional years as well, uh, for students. I will say that, that as we pick those grade levels, we, we thought those were the right ones because you then get to see the effect of some of the changes and you give it enough time to take, take place. I will say something that I think, I think is important to note. When we look at the initiatives for this year, like PBIS with our discipline management, the instructional model, I think, Dr. Rice, you mentioned that a little earlier. Those things, we wanna know if they take, uh, they take hold, right? And if it affects the discipline and the safety and things like that. If the instructional model has a different result on engagement in math and strategies and things like that. So it's very purposeful for us to kind of hone in on the schools that are, uh, implementing those strategies correctly, right? Uh, but in terms of the population, we're gonna, I think, target the same grade levels and then see, see the system improve overall.
And just for clarity, the sixth, eighth, and 10th, all, every grade level that was surveyed, all students were surveyed, uh, were targeted. There wasn't a sample within the grade. It was just the grades that were sampled.
Okay, okay. 'Cause some of the questions seemed a little subjective, so to have another group of sixth graders the next year, there could be variances, but absolutely no reason for it. So that's why I was asking that question. Okay, and then my last question is, on one of your first slides, the response rates and then the final sample. So the total responses originally, then they were data cleaned, and it said 206 responses were removed, but the difference is 485. Were there additional responses removed?
I'm gonna just go back to that slide if you don't mind. So I can.
There we go.
This one?
Yes. The, all those total responses for grade six, eight, 10, and 12?
Yeah, that should total to 15,000.
Okay, and then if you go to the next slide, you're saying that from that slide you just said, you cleaned out 206 responses? But the difference is 485.
Okay, then I have to check my numbers.
Okay, so I just didn't know.
Dr. Rappaport, that's our auditor on the board, and, uh, that's why we're so happy she was elected to the board.
I'll check my numbers.
I was just asking to make sure nothing else was removed.
No, nothing else was removed. So yeah, we'll check that.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
That's a good one.
I wouldn't have picked that out, Dr. Rappaport. It's, uh, that's why Ms. Mays is up here with us. So, uh, with that, uh, one more. Dr. Rush.
Uh, thank you for everything. Uh, you, you made a huge amount of data enjoyable.
There's more.
Oh, yes, there's, there's, there's a lot more. Are there anything, are there any things that you've defined that might need to be done differently at the next go-around? Any lessons learned as far as the administration? I know you gave very high, high comments, uh, high regards to everybody that helped in the process and that, on the campuses. Is there anything that, that would, I, I know you were surprised about the increase in the, the, uh, response rate and how high it is. We're overachievers, so we're looking, what else can we do? Do you, do you see anything that maybe could have been done better or that we should try to look at doing next year?
You know, from a survey administration standpoint, I think, um, we've got it locked down really well now. People know how to do it and what to do, uh, so I don't see any improvements really there. I think one thing that worked really well was in sixth and eighth, we had targeted classrooms. We had homerooms in sixth grade and computer lab in eighth grade, or computers, some computer class that all eighth graders take. If we could identify something similar for 10 and 12, it would sort of streamline. I just don't think that exists. Uh, it's very, it gets much more complicated in, in high school. If I was going to improve on something, uh, I would, I would love to get my hands on more administrative data and be able to connect what we have here to some more outcomes, maybe their, you know, standardized tests or whether or not they actually go to college. I don't know if you, as a district, obtain, um, national student clearinghouse data and where they actually go. I think there's a lot of powerful analyses that can be done with these data, and I know you have in-house capacity there as well.
Yeah.
And we will be giving you the data to do on your own. But I think there's a lot of conversations that can happen there in terms of making this data even more useful.
Yeah, uh, that, that's great. And we are in, in that process with our district. We are so focused on, on true outcomes. And, uh, besides the, the applying, well, did they stay in, did they complete? Uh, you know, our SAT and ACTs, they're all taking it great. How are they doing on it?
Right.
Uh, how are they get, how is that helping them get into college? We're really trying to put all the pieces together, so I think that's right on.
Dr. Kavassos?
Yes, I'd just like to say that as we continue our strategic plan, that this effort is so important. And I don't wanna lose sight of the, the, the effort of giving students a voice. And this board, in a strategic plan, our staff, we're taking the feedback. And, and we take it from employees, from parents, and now from students. And giving them a voice is so powerful in changing the culture of any institution, but certainly ours in, in a positive direction. So I wanna commend everyone's staff and everyone's acceptance to get it, giving students a voice. And I've said this often, I'll say it at this point as well. The most important part of all of this data is what we do about it. And that's why it's so important to continue to review it, but then set targets to improve. Thank you.
Very well said. Dr. Kavassos, and you were exactly right, and Dr. Rappaport. Rappaport's a great name for a doctor, so. Um, thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you next time. Tell everyone at Gibson, thank you. Next, we'll move on to open forum for non-agenda items. I don't have any cards for open forum for non-agenda items. We'll move on. items. I don't have any cards for open forum for non-agenda items. We'll move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Hogg, and I'd like to share some information about our district. First, our 600 New York facility was selected as the 2014 John Sasso Award by the National Community Development Association at the end of June. And so it was one of only 19 projects from across the country to win this award during the National Community Development Week for outstanding planning and implementation. Uh, this recognition was well-deserved by our staff and, and our commitment to partnering with our city in developing opportunities for our community. Next, I'd like to share that we had 19 elementary libraries open each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday this summer during extended-year session. And we have had very positive feedback on that. The libraries were not only open for extended-year students, but for the entire community. A total of 14,590 patrons, which the community, uh, patrons and classroom students visited the library. And there were nearly 2,000, uh, APL reading logs submitted because we opened the libraries in the summer when we had, uh, summer school. So it's a, it's great, uh, to partner again with the city and make sure that we afford library opportunities with, uh, for the entire community. Ausley Junior High School received quite an honor, uh, earlier this week from, as the United States Department of Education recognized Ausley Junior High as both a high-performing Title I school and a high-progress Title I school. Ausley is only one of 248 schools across Texas to earn this high-performing distinction and one of only, uh, 380 to earn it, uh, in the high-progress designation. High-performing, high-performing rewards, uh, schools in Title I that, with these distinctions, based on reading and math scores. Uh, so we're very proud of, of Ausley and the students and the staff at, at, at that school. Our first cohort of the Emerging Leaders Program has met and they are ready for a year-long progress of their learning, uh, in developing their leadership skills. They met at Adams Elementary, their library. Uh, they've met for four days this, this, uh, week. Uh, this, these are emerging leaders that are part of this, uh, program funded by Raise Your Hand Texas. As you're familiar with this, Raise Your Hand Texas has, uh, invested 1.3 million over three years in this program for Arlington ISD. We look forward to the progress and the success of these emerging leaders. Last but not least, Jamie Solins and I were able to make a presentation on behalf of AISD on Wednesday at the Evidence-Based Leadership Conference, uh, in Chicago. And our presentation was entitled, "Improvement is a Non-Negotiable. The Journey Is Worth It." And we both discussed the rationale for choosing evidence-based leadership. I want to thank Ms. Solins for taking the time, uh, and representing the board, uh, in this important endeavor. And again, uh, our district leads the way in making presentations, informing others, uh, as we improve public education. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. At this time, we'll move to, uh, school board reports. Any board reports? Ms. Pena?
I attended the Texas Association of School Board Summer Committee meeting for five days at the South Lake, at, at South Lake, for TASB directors, of which I serve on the nominations committee as a member, bylaws committee as a member, resolutions committee as a co-chair, and planning and develop, uh, development member, as a member. Uh, as a result of that, I brought back a lot of information for our board that, uh, I think at our next meeting, we will be discussing, uh, so I can share that information with them. Also, um, as the, I attended the Board Finance and Accountability teleconference, followed the next day with attendance at the RFP interviews with administration, and attended a council of PTA luncheon, and also a board audit committee meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. Ms. Mays?
Thank you. Um, I had a opportunity to, um, travel to Santa Fe to attend the, um, Center for Reform of School Systems, a retreat. Um, one thing that they like to say is, every community deserves a great school district, and I think that's true. I also think it was very exciting because the funds used to send myself and many other first-time trustees is from a foundation that believes that public education is important and the people who have stepped up to help lead that are important as well. So, um, very grateful that people give to that foundation so we can have this opportunity. Um, I also had an opportunity to, um, attend the principal and president's luncheon for PTA. Uh, very excited and I hope that everybody picks up on the, uh, information of Back to the Future, which is Texas PTA's, um, engaging theme for the next few years, Back the Future. Um, but really excited to see the principals, um, and the PTA presidents there learning. Um, once again, we're putting a lot of emphasis on engaging our parents and what an opportunity for that, um, partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. And congrats on going through CRSS. Everyone sitting up here has gone through that, and it is a great program. With that, we have no more school board reports. We have one more agenda items. Let me ask our secretary, do you have any items to cover for the evening?
No.
Perfect. We have one item, a Level III Personnel Grievance Hearing of Ronnie Harris. It is 10:01. We will take a 10-minute break so people can get situated. We will be back at 10:10. Got it. Now call to order the, back to order, the meeting of the AISD board trustees at 10:10. The next item on our agenda is consider the employee grievance hearing of Ronnie Harris. We will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.074 of the Open Meetings Act. Section 551.074 provides that the meeting may be closed for the purpose of considering deployment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer or employee to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. I ask to everyone who is not a part of this hearing or who is not going to participate in this hearing to now exit the boardroom. Thank you for your cooperation. At this time, is there a motion on the employee grievance hearing?
I have a motion.
Mr. Barron?
I move that the board uphold the administration's decision and that the board also direct the administration to provide counseling regarding career paths within the AISD to Mr. Harris.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Barron and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please Six trustees, present six trustees voted in affirmative. The motion passes. Thank you all for your time tonight. It is 11:45 PM. We're adjourned.